Good evening. This is the meeting of the North Andover Zoning Board of Appeals taking place May 21st, 2024 at Town Hall, and we will do the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, and eternal.
So, a little different tonight. Remote participation by the public will no longer be permitted. So, anybody who wants to comment or ask questions unfortunately needs to either be here in person or send a letter ahead of time. So, can I have a motion for the acceptance of the minutes for April 9th, 2024?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We are continuing the public hearing for 50 Peter Street until June 11th. So, next up is a new public hearing for 236 Johnson Street. No? Did I miss something? Oh, sorry. So, new public hearing for 325 Johnson Street.
All right. Notice is hereby given that the North Andover Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing at the North Andover Town Hall at 120 Main Street, North Andover, Mass. on Tuesday, May 21st, 2024 at 7:30 p.m. to all parties interested in the petition of Allison Sparks and Kevin Sparks for property at 325 Johnson Street, MAP 97, parcel 72, North Andover, Massachusetts, 01845, and the R3 zoning district. The applicants are requesting a variance pursuant to Town of North Andover zoning bylaws, section 195-4.19(c)(2(c), non-disturbance buffer zone within the watershed protection district in the R3 zoning district for the purpose of constructing a new garage located in the non-disturbance zone within the watershed protection district. Specifically, applicants have requested they be allowed to construct a one-and-a-half-story wood-framed detached garage with a 24-foot-by-30-foot footprint. Application and supporting materials are available for review at the office of the zoning department located at 120 Main Street, North Andover, Mass. on Monday, Wednesday, and Thursday from the hours of 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., Tuesday from the hours of 8:00 a.m. to 5:30 p.m., and Friday from the hours of 8:00 a.m. to 11:30 a.m. By order of the Board of Appeals, Alexandria A. Jacobs, Esquire, Chair.
Thank you. Okay, so who is here for 325?
Kevin and Allison, of course.
Hi, good evening.
Hi.
If you want to just tell us what's going on. I know you guys have kind of already done this before, if I recall correctly.
Yeah, exactly. I think Jack Sullivan represented us probably the first time through.
When was that?
When was that?
Was it 2021?
Well, you guys were the first to give us a variance. That's why we let it slip. We didn't catch it.
Yeah, we had the three. We had the zoning board, we had the watershed special permit, and the conservation commission. So, the conservation commission one, of course, took the longest by far.
Yeah, it was granted on September 13th, 2021.
Okay, thanks. And so, we had extended the watershed special permit extension, but due to an oversight on our part, we missed the fact that the zoning board one expired in December, this past December. So, the project is the same as what was reviewed before and accepted. No changes to the plan, just delays from COVID and other things.
Okay, so no change to the footprint or anything like that?
No.
No change of the location?
No change to the location. No. The plot plan is the same as was submitted before. Yeah.
And you guys said you had extended the conservation, so you don't have to go back to that.
We had extended the watershed special permit. The conservation commission special order is good until this December. So, and that can be extended, but we're hoping to complete construction before that.
Any questions from anybody?
Yes, I recall. You wanted to do this because you had a lot of stuff you wanted to store. So, did I get that right?
Is that a technical term, "stuff"?
Like, what's all this stuff been for two years?
It's been in the basement.
It's not a serious question.
I was gonna say.
It's primarily so we can keep the cars out of the winter, and I don't have to drag a lawnmower out of the basement each time I mow and things like that.
My sympathy is on how long this process is taking.
I don't think it was.
Right. And we've been 35 years in the house, so it's taken us a while to finally get to the point where we're gonna build a garage.
Anybody else?
So, everything is status quo from when we approved this in 2021? Everything is status quo?
Yes, yes. Including the, we have a septic system now. Part of the, part of the deal is to go into town sewer at the same time, which is of interest to the conservation commission.
It was the lapsed zoning board variance when our contractor applied for a permit. That's when it was flagged.
Yeah, that's when, that's when we discovered our oversight.
Well, thankfully, it's an easy fix, right?
Well, it's up to you.
That's on how easy you want to make it.
Well, I think you have four original board members, right?
I recall the...
I remember the discussion. I think I might have...
Now that I look at the plan, I recall it. Yeah.
Associate at the time, but...
And you had the, I'll call it the engineer.
Yeah, Jack Sullivan represented us for that.
He's been in front of us with other cases as well, so, yeah, I remember it well.
And he will be the engineer for this as it goes forward.
I'm intrigued by just how recessed you are from Johnson Avenue. I mean, you can't even, you know, that's pretty clever. I like that a lot. I mean, you're back, you're in, I like the woods, so...
You can thank Jack Linden for that. He's the one who built that. I don't know if you know it.
He was the chair of the conservation commission, and while he was chair of the conservation commission, he put in place the restrictions that meant that the house couldn't be built there anymore.
It's pretty typical of people.
Yeah, full up the ladder.
Sounds about right. Okay. Anybody else have any?
No.
No.
I mean, I wasn't here at the time. I assume there were no, like, things that held it up. It was like unanimous?
I think there was some conversation about the height and things like that, but I think in the end we were pretty...
Everyone was happy with it. Cool. Great.
Okay. Then if there's nothing else you guys want to add, we can close?
Public comment.
Public comment.
Oh. Am I supposed to forget that part, huh? Is there anyone here for public comment on the 325 Johnson Street? I went with the room. Then we can close.
I'd like to move to close public discussion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any discussion from the board?
It was good last time. It's good this time.
I'm not gonna dig up old bones, so...
I don't have any comment.
Okay. Then we will make a motion. I would say include the plan.
Yeah, I got eight sheets of architectural plans and one sheet by Sullivan Engineering. They're not really, the architectures aren't numbered, but they are dated.
Yeah, so just do the date and then take...
The number of sheets, yeah.
Okay. I make a motion to approve a variance pursuant to Town of North Andover zoning bylaws, section 195-4.19(c)(2(c), non-disturbance buffer zone within the watershed protection district in the R3 zoning district for the purpose of constructing a new garage located in the non-disturbance zone within the watershed protection district. Specifically, applicants have requested they be allowed to construct a one-and-a-half-story wood-framed detached garage with a 24-foot-by-30-foot footprint. Do I read the last paragraph? Yeah, I don't think so.
And then just include the documents.
Including a plan by Sullivan Engineering dated May 20th, 2021, consisting of one sheet and eight architectural plans titled Spock's Residence dated September 30th, 2022.
So, Ron's a yes. Michael?
Aye.
Frank?
Yes.
Aye.
And I'm also an aye. So, you guys are all set. We will have that to you in a couple weeks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Hopefully, it gets done.
Before it comes back to us again.
2024 will be your year.
Three strikes in your house.
Have a good night. All right. Now up is 236 Johnson Street.
Something about Johnson Street.
There is something about Johnson Street tonight.
Couple blocks from each other.
Yeah, they're close by each other, too.
Okay. Notice is hereby given that the North Andover Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing at the North Andover Town Hall at 120 Main Street, North Andover, Massachusetts, on Tuesday, May 21st, 2024, at 7:30 p.m. to all parties interested in the petition of Joshua R. Drollet for property at 236 Johnson Street, MAP 97, parcel 54, North Andover, Massachusetts, 01845, in the R3 zoning district. The applicant is requesting a special permit pursuant to Town of North Andover zoning bylaws, section 195-4.2Q Family Suite. Specifically, applicant has requested a family suite of 640 square feet entirely within the walkout basement of the existing single-family home in the R3 zoning district. Application and supporting materials are available for review at the office of the zoning department located at 120 Main Street, North Andover, Massachusetts, on Monday, Wednesday, and Thursday from the hours of 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., Tuesday from the hours of 8:00 a.m. to 5:30 p.m., and Friday from the hours of 8:00 a.m. to 11:30 a.m. By order of the Board of Appeals, Alexandria A. Jacobs, Esquire, Chair.
Thank you. All right. So, who do we have here on 236? You can step right up to the podium and just state your name and then just...
Did I pronounce the name right?
Drollet, yeah.
Okay. I might have said a T.
That's okay. It's French, yeah. Good evening, members of the board. I'm Joshua Drollet, and this is my wife, Kiana. Thank you for hearing us tonight. So, we're looking to, as you read, create a family suite and basically utilize the entirety of our basement in our home at 236 Johnson Street. As you can see, my wife is pregnant with our second child, and the current bedroom setup for the house is a three-bedroom. Her parents help us for about six months of the year, and my parents for the other six months. Childcare is really expensive, so that's a huge help for us. But with a three-bedroom house, that doesn't quite fit with the growing size of our family. So, we'd like to utilize the full space of our basement, making the family suite, which will be mainly inhabited by her parents for half of the year while they're visiting and helping out. And then the rest of it, as you can see on the plan that you have in front of you and up there, will be used to extend our living space, create a small kind of home gym, and little play area for the kids, where people can't see it for the rest of the house, so we can keep the main floor of the house nice and clean. Yeah. That's what we're looking to do.
Well, I can say as a parent of two kids, you are very lucky to have that.
I agree.
As a grandparent of one kid, I don't know how, it's not exhausting.
They are. This is why they need a family suite.
And that's why they tag team.
No, I meant your folks.
That's why they tag team. Yeah, they take six months off and then six months on. Yeah, exactly.
Okay. So, can I have the next? Are you able to point the next? There we go. Okay. So, I'm assuming this is the egress out?
Correct, yep. And it's a walkout, yep. And then just to the right of where you were pointing, yep, that's gonna be an emergency egress, as that's a bathroom, bedroom, sorry. So, that'll be like a window made egress. And then to utilize the rest of the basement and be able to still use the storage, which you see in the top right, where you see kind of right in the middle there, yep, if you go, yep, to the right more and down, and right below that, yep, exactly. That's gonna be another egress out of the basement, which goes into the backyard. Yeah, right there, exactly, yep. So, that'll allow us to be able to go in and out of the storage and everything like that from the backyard, because we'll be somewhat losing that access by losing the current walkout, which will be part for their family suite.
Where are the stairs?
The stairs to go upstairs are in the top left.
Is that this right here?
Yep, exactly right.
Okay. I thought it might be, but...
Yeah. Yeah, it's a little hard to see from the diagram then.
Yeah, there's not as much contrast on the projector.
Right.
So, it meets all the other requirements for the percentage of space and all that sort of thing? Otherwise, it would have been written up if it wasn't?
I believe it's 13%?
Exactly, yeah. Yeah, once we finish the whole space, the house is actually very large, at like 4,000 something square feet, yeah.
Is there anyone here on 236 Johnson Street? Okay, we got a lot of people tonight.
Yeah.
Are there any other questions from the board?
Is this, I missed what you were saying. Is the basement finished already?
It's currently not finished. There is a, there is a bathroom where the planned bathroom is gonna go, which is a finished bathroom, but that's about it for what's finished.
I was wondering where the fourth bathroom on the application was, so that it's an existing bathroom.
Yeah, exactly. It's an existing, but we don't use it because there's not much to do in the basement right now.
Yeah, you don't want to walk through like a creepy unfinished basement to go. Yeah, makes sense.
It's a little strange, because it's a full bathroom, so there's a shower and everything. I think they, I think there's a pool on the outside, so I think they used it to be able to maybe shower after. I'm not sure.
I was gonna ask you about, I drove by your house, and so I thought it was a pool, so you're saying that, okay. And so, how far your addition here, as it goes out to the yard, out into your backyard, which is at this, you know, descending level, how far out will it go from where the house presently is and where the pool is?
So, there'll be no change to the footprint of the house. So, it's all gonna be within the current frame structure of the house, yeah. No additional space to it, yeah. But from that door to the pool is about 45 feet, if I had to guess.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else from any board members? I love the basement ones.
Yeah.
So, just, the footprint of the basement looks different than the footprint of the first floor. Maybe I...
Yeah, so on the first floor, basically where you see that big empty white space in the bottom middle, kind of like where the U part would be, on the first floor, that's a finished three-season porch, I guess you could call it.
Oh, I see, yeah.
So, it kind of looks, it makes it look more square on the first floor, but the basement, it's...
I just think they're kind of inverted.
That's right.
From page to page, yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
So, there's no basement to the, to that three-season porch.
I'm gonna move to close public comment.
Does Alex have something to say?
No, I think I'm okay with that. Well, hold on. Is there anything else you guys would like to add?
No, thank you.
All right, now...
All right, I move that we close public comment.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Sorry for stepping out ahead.
I just have to think. When we go too quick, I fear I'm missing something. Any discussion from the board?
Easy.
At all?
That's what this is for, so...
What we all wish we could add.
Yeah.
I love the season.
You're talking, you're talking about the grandparents coming to babysit, right?
Unfortunately, my grandparents, the grandparents and future children all live within 10 minutes of my house, so I don't think I will need this.
All right, fine.
Maybe for future kids after college.
Make them pay rent.
There you go.
So, I don't think I need to read, I don't think I need to include these two pages.
We're just going to warn.
These aren't titled or numbered or dated.
We've not closed that yet. So, I am just intrigued, because whenever we've done these expansions, additions, okay, there's always been, I see it on one of the pages here, it says, "The premises are inspected annually by the building inspector to conformance." Now, I don't, I don't recall that, that, that was under, that that was an option that was there.
Well, no, it's part of the bylaw. So, essentially, what this means is that if Paul, in a year and a half, goes knocking on their door and says, "Knock, knock, knock, I want to inspect your family suite," if he goes down there, or if they sit there and go, "Oh, yep, sorry, we can't right now," and it appears that maybe they have a tenant there, I'm not saying, then there's, there's issues of whether or not they can revoke because they're violating the family suite. So, he has the right to inspect, which means if he knocks on the door and says, "I need to inspect your family suite," they essentially have to allow him in the house to make sure it's still functioning as a family suite.
Thank you.
Because obviously, if they had a tenant in there, you might have issues.
Right.
I would just do 10B current first floor.
Yeah.
And 10B proposed basement plan. And that's all you have?
Yeah.
Did we close discussion and move to vote?
We close public comment. Okay.
Could I second public comment?
Ron? Any discussion from the board? Anything?
I'm ready to vote.
Anybody? Nothing?
Do you have things you want to say? It seems like, yeah, it seems like you would like to say something, yeah. You know, I'm really curious how nice you feel this is gonna be for your parents. I mean, it's, no?
I think we know that.
Yeah.
I worry when we, when things are too easy, I feel like I've missed something, because they're normally not easy. Okay, you're up.
Okay. I make a motion to approve a special permit pursuant to Town of North Andover zoning bylaws, section 195-4.2q Family Suite. Specifically, applicant has requested a family suite of 640 square feet entirely within the walkout basement of the existing single-family home in the R3 zoning district, including two architectural plans titled 10B current first floor and 10B proposed basement plan.
Ron?
Second.
And?
Aye.
Aye.
I am an aye. Steve?
Yes.
Frank?
Aye.
All right. You guys are all set. We will have that to you in a few weeks. Good luck. Congratulations.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Good night. Good night. Okay. Up next is 1250 Osgood Street. My favorite counselor.
Okay, a little bit more reading for this one?
Yep, take a breath.
Notice is hereby given that the North Andover Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing at the North Andover Town Hall at 120 Main Street, North Andover, Massachusetts, on Tuesday, May 21st, 2024, at 7:30 p.m. to all interested parties in the petition of 1250 Osgood Street LLC on behalf of Milford Learning LLC for property at 1250 Osgood Street, MAP 35, parcel 10, North Andover, Mass. 01845, in the I-2 zoning district. The applicant is requesting dimensional variances pursuant to Town of North Andover zoning bylaws, section 195-10.8A, for front and rear setbacks for the purpose of raising the existing structure and rebuilding a two-story street-facing and three-story rear-facing facility for use as a daycare, medical offices, and associated improvements on the property. The applicant is requesting a variance pursuant to Town of North Andover zoning bylaws, section 195-7.3 yards setbacks, and section 195-3, Attachment 3, Table 2, Summary of Dimensional Requirements. Footnote 1. In all districts except Village Commercial and any corridor development district, front setbacks along Route 114 shall be a minimum of 100 feet. Front setbacks shall be 100 feet along 125 and Industrial 1 and 2 districts. The first 50 feet of front setbacks under this requirement shall be made to provide an effective visual buffer, and no parking shall be permitted in the I-2 zoning district. Specifically, applicant has requested a front setback needing a relief waiver of 67.87 feet. The front setback proposed is 32.13 feet, and the front setback allowed per table 2 footnote 1 is 100 feet. The applicant is requesting a variance pursuant to Town of North Andover zoning bylaws, section 195-7.3 yards setbacks, and section 195-3, Attachment 3, Table 2, Summary of Dimensional Requirements. Footnote 1. In all districts except Village Commercial and any corridor development district, front setbacks along Route 114 shall be a minimum, minimum of 100 feet. Front setbacks shall be 100 feet along Route 125 in Industrial 1 and 2 districts. The first 50 feet of front setbacks under this requirement shall be made to provide an effective visual buffer, and no parking shall be permitted in the I-2 zoning district. Specifically, applicant has requested a relief variance of the effective visual buffer per table 2 footnote 1, and allow them for parking in, parking within the first 50 feet buffer from Route 125 of the front setback. The applicant is requesting a variance pursuant to Town of North Andover zoning bylaws, section 195-7.3 yards setbacks, and section 195-3, Attachment 3, Table 2, Summary of Dimensional Requirements for one rear setback in the I-2 zoning district. Specifically, applicant has requested a rear setback needing a relief variance of 5.92 feet. The rear setback proposed is 44.08 feet, and the rear setback allowed per table 2 is 50 feet. Application and supporting materials are available for review at the office of the zoning department located at 120 Main Street, North Andover, Mass. on Monday, Wednesday, and Thursday from the hours of 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., Tuesday from the hours of 8:00 a.m. to 5:30 p.m., and Friday from the hours of 8:00 a.m. to 11:30 a.m. By order of the Board of Appeals, Alexandria A. Jacobs, Esquire, Chair.
Thank you. Good evening, Attorney Vaughn. How are you?
I'm well, thank you. Attorney Brian Vaughn from Smolak &amp; Vaughn on behalf of 1250 Osgood Street LLC, the applicant, and Milford Learning LLC, the owner. The property to issue, of course, is 1250 Osgood Street, which we're all familiar with as the old Hokkaido restaurant, and before that, the Beijing restaurant. The applicants are part of a group that operates childcare facilities. They have, I believe, 12 different locations in Massachusetts. The closest one they have, they operate under the learning experience, and I think they have one at 161 River Road in Andover, if you're familiar with that. But it's, like I said, they have, I think, two dozen of them, maybe I said 12. I think it's two dozen they have in Massachusetts, and 400 of them, I believe, nationwide. So, they run a pretty good operation. They know what they're doing. In addition to the childcare facility, they're looking to add medical office space. Both are, you know, allowed, I guess by right, as uses within the industrial zone, but it's kind of, it's kind of interesting. I think when you read the legal notice, it seems like we're, we're asking for, for quite a bit, but in reality, we're not really asking for much of anything more than already exists on the, on the lot today, because the front setback, it's, it's an existing setback. There is no landscape buffer, and the parking is already right, right to the road. Originally, when they purchased the property, they were, they were planning to just improve the existing structure, which probably wouldn't have triggered the variances, but it became clear that the condition of the foundation, it was just, made more sense to raise it completely and rebuild it. So, you know, we've, we've submitted architectural plans, obviously. I think if you look at the lot, it's, it is a very oddly shaped lot. It's in kind of an inverted L, which, and there are a bunch of wetlands in the back, so there really isn't any place else where you, where you could put the building as opposed to where it is. And in fact, you know, if you were to, to enforce the bylaw strictly with respect to the industrial zone requirements, I don't think the lot would be buildable at all with the 100-foot setback. And I think another interesting thing, just to note, is that it's zoned industrial, and while these uses are permitted in the industrial zone, this, they're really not typical industrial uses. And the setback and the buffering is really intended to shield the kind of typical big industrial buildings from being so close to Route 125. I don't know. If you, if you look at the memo that I included, there's a, there's a picture of Google Maps of this lot, and I think it kind of illustrated very clearly the, I think it would be Exhibit A. the, I think it would be exhibit A. But yeah, no, actually exhibit B, excuse me. If you look at this, at this picture, you can see the big white structure in the back is, is the industrial. And the Beijing or Hokkaido property in, in the front, right on Route 125. You know, the intent of the bylaw, I think, was really to shield those large industrial buildings from Route 125. Whereas these are really commercial retail uses that are very consistent with, with all of the abutting uses. And had this property right on Route 125 been either zoned business or general business as its neighbors, it, it wouldn't really need.
I mean, the only thing that sticks out about the building right now is that it's not in great shape.
Yeah, I mean, and, you know, that's, that's another piece of it is, overall, the project, I, I think, is, you know, it's, it's a property that needs a facelift. I think.
What are we talking height difference between what it is now to what it's going to be?
So I.
Because I know right now it's one story.
Yeah, I think basically it's, it's one more story. But from the front, it's going to be two stories, but it's going to slope off in the back. So, I mean, I can tell you it's going to comply with zoning for height. We're not looking for any relief on height.
And the current structure is one story, but it has like a, a tall peaked roof. So, I mean, the total height might not even go up more than like five or six feet, I don't know.
Probably not that different than the loft.
Yeah.
On the renderings, there's, now I understand exhibit A is just a concept. But it's showing parking in front of the building. The rendering isn't. So I'm assuming exhibit A is just kind of more building versus parking.
Yes, yeah. The, yeah.
It doesn't have the same design that's in the document.
No, I know that, I just, I want to make sure when I'm looking at two different things, I want to know which ones.
No, no, that's.
I was kind of curious about parking, because I know that, especially when you get into young childcare, the like ratio of kids to staff is relatively low. So like, there's lots of staff to take care of young kids. Do we know how many parking spaces will be needed just for the daycare? And if there will be enough for those other two tenants?
So Paul did do a parking analysis. And yes, it, it's.
It fits.
It fits, but, you know, I guess going back to the prior question as well. If we look at the, the proposed site plan, it includes both parking calculations, as well as the proposed height is shown as 38 and a half feet.
So 78 spaces.
Yeah.
And I think I counted the number of rooms for the daycare, assuming there were like two adult staff that would need to be, and then would need like 40 spaces. So that would be like over half of the spaces.
I mean, like, two teachers, if you have like 16 kids or something like that.
It's like one per eight kids. I think when they get, it's young though. Yeah, when they're little, it's more than that.
But infant's not going to be running.
Depending on, it depends on age group. I think the very young, it's like 1 to 5. Then the preschool, preschool and pre-k, it's more like 1 to 10. I don't know for sure.
Yeah, I mean, if there were one adult staff per room, then it would be like 20 versus then 40.
So this is, I don't recall where I saw it. Was not the property initially built in 1950?
Yes.
Okay, so my, I'm asking my peers this question. I mean, it's like, is this not grandfathered? I mean, because this, the building preceded the bylaws.
It would be different if they were going to keep the foundation and rip down and then rebuild from the foundation. They would be fine.
I think they would need to keep the studs also, like, not just the foundation.
Yeah.
So yeah, if they're keeping the old building, then it's grandfathered. But, but if you tear down the building and start anew, it's a new construction.
Okay.
But, you know, we are, as a zoning board, allowed to factor that in in our understanding of this.
I got to say, I kind of don't like how, where we're ripping down the building. We're not trying to increase the setback a little. I mean, I know in one corner, the existing is 38.87, and we're, we're going to 50.93.
I mean, that would be closer to the wetlands by far.
38.
I think that part really, because I agree with you in many ways, you're not necessarily, it seems like you're asking for a lot. I'll be honest with you, two stories, three stories in the back, that really doesn't bother me at all. Even the rear setback isn't bothering me. But I am a little bothered by we're not, we're not trying to move the building back a little bit.
I mean, on the other hand, like, I look at it along this, that street, right? And like, everything's along the street.
But everything's existing along the street.
I, I agree, but like, I don't feel like I need to push this building back. And in fact, if you push it any, much further back, it starts to look different than everything else.
Well, and also, like, there are wetlands all behind there. If we rip out the current foundation, fill it in with whatever, and put in a whole new foundation much closer to the wetlands, I'm not sure that's actually benefiting the town as a whole for what's essentially like an aesthetic choice. Or, you know, in this area, it doesn't feel oppressive to have like even a two-story building.
Well, that's why I'm not, I don't have an issue with the two-story or the, the three-story in the back, I guess.
It's not the back. Didn't I read where that is going to be, I'll call it the play area for kids?
Yeah, so it's on the.
So you wouldn't want to encroach on.
On the right-hand side of the building and in the rear of the building, there's play areas and, and also, you know, that was done very intentionally to kind of control the, the site design for safety reasons and.
And if you move it further back also, you're going to be pushing into that slope.
I'm not saying you don't make the buildings smaller.
How much further back? Because like, the setback is 100 feet, that would be the entire building.
I'm not looking for all of it, but, you know, variance of 67?
What are the?
It's an existing structure.
I guess I'm thinking too, I mean, the loft is, you know, how, how far is the loft from the road there? I mean, it's probably significantly closer.
Yeah, well, the loft is definitely less of a setback than this building, than the Hokkaido building has right now.
Yeah, or at least very similar.
And if they come in to rebuild the loft, I'm going to have the same issue.
Well, I, I, I think it's interesting that even the, I think all of the buildings are much closer than, than this one, actually. And if it were, you know, the property to the left is, is zoned, I think just, one of them's, I think B2, and one of them's general business, I forget which is which. But I think the setback is 25 feet on the property to the left, looking at it from 125, where we would comply there. And the property to the right, the front setback, I believe, was 35 feet. So we would just be within a matter of a couple of, of feet at a point which is an existing condition. I think in some ways, the issue is that the, the parcel is probably, probably inappropriately zoned and probably shouldn't really be industrial, which creates the added setbacks.
It's also only that front corner that's 32 feet from the property line. The, the left side of the building is 50 feet. So it's like a pretty big swing just by being oriented the way that it is on the site.
So can't we swing it a little bit?
I don't know much about foundation work, I guess.
In terms of the, it's going to track the, the same line?
Yeah, it, it was, it was designed around the, the existing structure originally, because the original plan was to maintain the existing structure.
But aren't you ripping everything out?
Because the foundation was in good shape, is what you said earlier.
Right, so everything is being leveled, right? Clean slate.
Well, yeah, but I'm, I'm, I'm not, I'm, I'm not a, a general contractor. I just know that there's a lot of other issues that come into play in terms of, you know.
See, I'm not even looking for the building to be made smaller. If you just turn, because the, the building is angled. If you just turn it a little, then you can.
So it's squared up.
So that it's squared up. Not only does it look more pleasing to the eye, maybe, but then you have, you could have at least 50.
I don't know, there's kind of a jaunty look to that, you know?
Is jaunteness something we're supposed to get to?
It's a term.
Find it in the bylaw form.
Was it, were they trying to make an effort, thinking it would be a smoother approval process if they use the same footprint?
Yeah, they.
Maybe why they didn't.
They were trying to, to keep it as consistent as they could. And also addressing, you know, trying to maintain, you know, you are 125, so you've got to maintain your same curb cuts or, you know, try to, as at least the path, past the, the path of least resistance. It, also just trying to address site circulation, make sure they could fit in their, their, the, the play areas, and, and also, I think, in, in part, building it into the, the slope of, of the property. Probably makes the entire grading process easier.
Are they using the same curb cuts? It's hard to see in the existing plan exactly, but they.
No.
I kind of, it kind of looks, but I just, I don't know, it's too small for me to. I see one, I see, I see the radius of one of them.
I know that the one to the right, I, I believe is, is the same. And if you look at the, I guess, the first sheet, it shows the existing condition.
Right. Just a little hard to make out, but.
This is where it would be helpful, like change.
Is, is the, is the, is Route 125 there? Sometimes Route 1, you know, they're, in the state control, sometimes they're in local, is, in this location, is that state?
I believe it's state.
So that, that's a huge hassle to. I've been through that, trying to get any kind of permit from the state for a change for the, for the curb cuts.
Yeah.
I'm not looking for curb cut change.
No, but I mean, just as far as where your access drives a lot of what the rest of your site plan is.
Also the topography, which, I mean, the current building, or the, the proposed building seems to work with the topography.
I mean, I'm wary of trying to, you know, make the, the perfect the enemy of the good here.
I don't see how 20 feet is that. Turning a building, a corner, 20 feet.
I mean, they would have to do excavation, like.
A lot of land building.
Right. And as opposed to.
If they're ripping out the building, though.
Yeah, but if they're ripping out an existing foundation, they're, they're not excavating previously undisturbed ground.
Yeah, I, I can also say that, you know, the project is, has been substantially delayed, obviously, because when they got into it, they realized that they were going to have to do this. I think part of the, their objective and goal was to, to try to make it the least.
Use the old building.
But they're not, because they're going from 38 to 50 on the, the corner that's wider, on the left.
No, no, but he was saying that when they originally got this property, they wanted.
I understand that. And if the foundation was being kept, it would be a completely different story. But where they're leveling it, and they're obviously moving this corner back, because like I said, they're at 38 now, they're going to go to 50.
But that's just a glass atrium, so.
Glass atrium there is that big?
I mean, the right corner is 32 on both. It's the same dimension.
With the cyclone fencing around the old restaurant, it looks like the reasoning process is almost begun. Is that, is it just the look of the cyclone fencing around the property now, Brian?
I don't, to my knowledge, nothing has, has changed on-site for a while. That was when they first came in, they were starting to, to, to proceed. And then things really slowed down because we ran into this unanticipated permitting issue. Because originally, we didn't, we didn't think that we were going to be requiring variances. And so I know a, a lot of time and effort by engineers, architects, et cetera. And a significant amount of, of review with, with Paul went into, into this process and.
Is, is Milford Learning LLC, are they the property owner, or are they, are they?
They're the owner.
Okay, so there's not.
No, excuse me. Yes, 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 they are. They're going to, they're going to sell it to 1250 Osgood Street LLC, which is the applicant. But currently, Milford Learning is still the owner.
So they already own it, so this isn't?
Yes.
They didn't buy it under option of approval or anything like that?
No, they, they bought it. And that would, would have been a very, probably different analysis on the acquisition side. But they bought it with the intent of modifying the existing structure so that they didn't think they needed this relief if they realized that we're going to have to obtain variances. It may well have been a, um, attempt, at least, for a different negotiation. Typically, we wouldn't close without obtaining.
So is he, is the future owner, is that an affiliate of the Learning Center? Or is that a, a property investor? Who's going to be leasing it to them? So it's an affiliate of this? Do they typically, are the locations leased space? To other tenants?
Yes, but every property is, is, is different.
Okay.
No, and, and this one's very different, too, just because it's, it's, um, it's more of a prime location on Route 125, obviously.
So are there, sorry, are there other tenants for those other medical office spaces?
Not, not currently, it's.
So why, why, why limit those spaces to medical office? Is that because it's permitted in the zoning versus?
It's permitted in zoning because it's in the industrial. It's, it's, you would probably have to, depending on what you wanted to do, you may have to look for a zoning change to go to a typical commercial retail.
Could they do other office?
And, but also, I think the other part of it was, at least the vision that they have, is that it would be a good, consistent use.
Put a pediatric office in there?
That's ideally what they would like to have in there. Maybe dental, pediatric, or something along those lines.
Yeah, I just didn't know if you wanted to be limited to that. I mean, if, if the zoning allows general office, then why, would, you know, since it's not leased yet, you come back later to say, ah, we couldn't get medical, but we have an accountant?
So I, I would say that, you know, because we're not looking for zoning relief on, on the use, if we ended up with something else that complied, we could then talk to Paul about it. What may be an issue would be, we still have to make, you know, he would still make sure that the parking worked for.
Right.
Whatever that used was.
So, okay, so, so by listing it as medical office on these plans in this application, you're not, you don't think you're limited to other allowed uses in the future?
No, so long as we, we would comply otherwise.
Right.
Because.
That's right, other allowed uses.
Right, because Paul's going to send us back if we needed further relief on parking, for instance.
But realistically, running a machine shop won't be good for business.
No, and, and, I mean, that's, I, the, I think the other thing is that realistically, you're.
It's louder, I don't know.
Realistically.
Yeah, fair.
Realistically, you're probably not going to find the true industrial use that would work on this site either.
Right. Because it is really not shaped for the type of industrial use, like that, that the zoning considers. I mean, that picture was pretty visually contrasted.
So just along with this whole conversation and the position in the building that we've been, okay, so I'm looking at, you got about 3,000 square feet for the playground in the back. And there's the parking. I'm, I, I don't recall seeing or hearing anything about how many students, how many, how many, how many kids are going to be dropped off and brought there as I look at, at the, how it's positioned here. It kind of, that's what goes into my mind is.
It says 148 students on the. It says a hundred and forty-eight students on the analysis, on the parking calculation.
Well, what about the students? They, they, what are you, what are they anticipating? They, they must have modeled in terms of, you know, return on their investment. I'm just curious, how many, how many grades, how many, or how many teacher, I don't know, some metric that puts some scale for me to help me understand this.
Yeah, I.
Do you have this analysis?
I think that the, the parking, they have estimated a hundred and forty-eight. And again, I know from some other projects.
But that's for medical and?
No, 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 that is just, it's broken down, actually. It's a hundred and forty-eight for the daycare.
Okay.
Which is fifty-one point eight spaces, and then the medical office gets twenty-six point two spaces.
Yeah, so that's on the right side there, there's the parking calculations.
I thought.
On the first page.
Yeah, no, I saw that. I thought, I thought I saw something else, but I thought I might have been missing something.
Is it this one?
No, I have those. I just saw it wrong. So my other question is, and. I was going to say, I think that if you look also at the architectural plans, there, there were some licensing calculations that were, were included as well, which was the breakdown of the, of the classes and the, you know, projected number of, of children at each age group.
I wish I had noticed that before I mentioned it earlier, but yeah.
SA one point one.
Well, you know, in round numbers, three-fourths of the space is for the kids, so to speak. I mean, they all, there's, well, one quarter of it is for medical office. So three-quarters are for the learning center.
Well, at least in terms of the parking spaces.
No, in terms of square, square footage.
Does that change how we would look at it?
As we talk about the space and how it's positioned, it looks to me like the, the back, and call it whatever that playground area or that proposed playground area. I mean, that's, to me, becomes more essential, the more I learn about the kids there. I mean, my, my concern about not encroaching upon the back based on what I've seen and heard so far.
Yeah, I agree.
So I have a question about the height.
Mm-hmm.
Because the property next door had calculated the height of the, one of the buildings wrong, and they had to come back for a variance after they had built the building. And it had to do, you know, it was basically in the method that they calculate height from the various grades at different points around the building. When you drop off here, you know, you're, you're allowed fifty-five feet. You're telling us it's thirty-eight feet, I, I just.
We want to make sure you don't need to have the variance.
Yeah, I, I guess all, all I can, can suggest is, is that I, again, I know Paul scrutinized this, and I do know when I had.
I can imagine it, it would still fit within fifty-five feet, even if it was. It's just if you have two corners of the building where it's thirty-five feet above grade, and then you have the two corners in back, that seem like they'd be a lot higher.
So the numbers are actually on SA one point one. So the basement floor is at minus fourteen feet, and the roof is at thirty-five point four feet, thirty-five feet, four inches. So that would bring you to forty-nine feet, four inches.
Yeah, and then.
That would be the, the tallest dimension from the, all the way at the bottom of the back.
And I forget, but is it the average of the four corners?
That's the tallest of the tall.
So, right, so it would still fit within what's required, but.
That's still over fifty-five.
But the plan lists the proposed as thirty-eight, so that's another question I have. If it turns out it's forty, do you have to come back to us? Or it's still within the zoning, so is, is, would you be?
No, I, I, yeah, I don't think we would have to come back unless Paul determined, as you did for the.
Fifty-five feet.
Right.
Okay, so you're not locked in because we're approving this set of plans that lists thirty-eight. You're not locked into that.
Because all those dimensions are on the site plans that will be in there.
Yeah. Okay, all right, just wanted to.
The third variance wanting parking within the first fifty feet of the buffer. Is that the parking we're looking at on the very far right and the very far left?
The.
So on the plan of land.
The proposed site plan.
Not this one and the next one.
Yep.
So those.
Even, even these two might be within that.
But that's what we're talking about, parking, right? Is essentially the corners and a little bit.
Well, right, except we're really talking, you know, it's, it's because it's, it's in that footnote to, which is only applicable to industrial, says the first fifty feet is supposed to be landscaped.
Yeah.
And so, yes, it is that, it is that parking, but it's not just along the street, technically. It's the, the full fifty feet. And to the, to the extent that, you know, under that, that footnote, it's supposed to be a landscape buffer.
It looks like roughly ten and a half spaces that are within fifty feet on either side.
But it looks like you're not.
Probably the two in the middle.
I'm sorry.
No, I mean, that's all.
It looks like you're not changing the edge of pavement.
I don't think, I don't, I don't think we are, and I mean, I would say two things about that. One is, it's still going to be subject to site plan review, and the planning board is very particular about curb appeal. And so, so they're going to have a pass at that. And secondly, what I would maybe suggest, if you were concerned about a specific condition, would, what might be fair would be to say that it was no worse than the existing condition if you didn't want to make a carp launch.
I mean, I remember, I want to say it was about two years ago, we had little learners in here.
Not even that, it was a year ago.
Yeah. It was September of twenty-two.
Oh, wow.
I was in Arizona.
Pleasant Street.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And there was, there was concerns of, of parking, because we're specifically dealing with the daycare in this instance, just like with here. I mean, I see the flow that you guys are, are going to be keeping with, but I am sitting here looking at this and going, okay, so we're having all of these parents parking with their kids and then essentially crossing.
This is more navigable than that was.
Way more.
And, and that was also, I think, part of.
You're coming in off of 125, which I personally think is faster speed than at least the other daycare was off of Pleasant Street.
Yeah, but that would, had like ten feet in front of the building for cars. And like, they were doing parking like lined up right in front of the building. This, this is like, has a full travel lane in front of the.
Yeah, and I think, I think part of the, the concept is, is that with the one-way design on the right-hand side of the building, if you were having any queuing to get them to the drop-off, the drop-off is going to be close to the building. But traffic would, would queue along that around the building, I believe.
I don't like big numbers.
It's, it's really not that big, it's in.
Sixty-seven?
But when you can, when you can, you know, it is, it's, I appreciate your concern. I've been in front of this board before, and I've seen it. I, I just think that a significant distinguishing factor here is, is the existing condition. It's, it's no worse than what's there now.
But don't we look at, at trying to make it better, right? If you're, if you're looking for, for certain things, it's almost like, what are you giving? I mean, I think.
I, I appreciate that, but I also don't know that necessarily, with this type of a building, on this type of a, a road, if, if it is better with a greater setback. I actually think the better use for the property is, you know, similar to like, the Starbucks is close to the road, and Joe Fish is close to the road. And, and here, you still have adequate site circulation, parking, and.
Yeah, Joe Fish is all parking in front of it, between it and the road.
Yeah, and, and of course, every, every site is different, too. We have site constraints here that you don't have on Joe Fish's lot, so.
And I would have the same irks if Joe Fish was coming in here to rip their building down and start anew.
Is that general business or industrial?
What is?
I believe it's.
I won't hold you to it.
I, I, it might, that one might be, hold on one second. That one might be, be.
And, and obviously, the Starbucks was created with new zoning that went with the Princeton complex. But it was also made in that space that is not that far from this building.
And I have two cents on that.
I know, you would not have picked it, but, but if we're going with what the, what that area is and how people experience that area, I see nothing about this that is out of the ordinary. And in fact, setting it back further would basically just hide it.
I.
And leave less space for a playground or parking, which are both more important uses for land than, than what, a, a larger strip in front that doesn't serve any purpose?
Twenty-one hundred square feet is pretty big for a playground.
If you have a hundred and forty-eight kids, it does not feel very big.
They don't all go out at the same time.
Even fifty kids, that's not much.
Yeah.
Listen, little learners is smaller.
They make do, but why not?
They're all on top of each other, like.
Yeah, they like it, they're kids. I just don't like feeling as if we're not getting anything that's, that's going to be.
But you're getting a much more attractive and better building.
Don't get me wrong, that is at the forefront of my brain.
It's a need for the community.
That is one of the things at the forefront of my brain, is, is what that building has looked like for probably the last decade.
Yeah, I mean, I will say that I have looked at that building, you know, for the last few years since Hokkaido closed, and wondered every time I go by, like, I wonder when something's going to get built there, so.
North End of Ramons knew it was going to be a daycare.
I, I'm sure they did.
They do.
I heard a rumor of something else, so. Guess I have the wrong connections.
You do, you have to get on North End of Ramons.
In of, in of Ramons.
They know it all.
Frank, you shouldn't be on that.
I think it's, I think it's a good redeployment of the property.
Agreed.
Come on.
I mean, I think we're at an impasse here.
So much across the board. So much.
There's not even any houses across the street to be, like, concerned.
I know, but it's like, so when, when Mobil came to us on 114, they wanted interior illuminated sign. Now, aside from the fact that they were with all the other gas stations, so it made sense for them to be competitive in that sense, they were putting their sign in compliance, so they were giving something to get something, which made it easier to give an interior illuminated sign.
But I guess like, so what, so like, when we're making these decisions, I think we do have to sort of think about what, what is the purpose of zoning? Is it just to make arbitrary hurdles for people to jump over when they need to do something? Or is it to make sure that things are roughly not moving too fast out of pace with what we are all expecting to have? This is moving forward in only a good way.
I would also say, I guess, to Laura's point. I mean, every case that comes to court is obviously different. Some are stronger and some are weaker cases. This, in my legal opinion, is a very strong case, a good case for, for the variances we're asking for. So you could.
I get that we get a nice, pretty, brand-new building.
I do care.
I mean, I have a year left and I'm done paying for daycares.
Oh, I see, oh, I see, that's why.
I think you pulled the ladder up.
You might think of it as that you, you're looking for some give-back, but maybe they've already baked that give-back into the plan.
I mean, realistically, on, on a, I mean, a couple of things. One is, I, I'm not sure I agree with the statement that our job as the ZBA is to extract a pound of flesh from applicants.
I'm not asking for a pound of flesh, maybe a pinky.
The, the other thing is the, the, the reality that if we were to say no, their solution would be to just not have the medical offices, but probably have the same footprint. Right, because.
Well.
Well, no, because they want the medical offices as revenue for doing all.
But also, I think it's needed to also offset the, in order to get the nice building, it costs more to build it, right? And then you've got to justify it, so, you know, that, it, there is a, a financial element where the medical office becomes more important. But Michael also raises a good point in as much as, like, I suppose, without the medical, it becomes basically by right, as far as it would throw you into the Dover Amendment, and then it's a, a limited review.
I don't like Dover.
And you know, and there was thought of filing in the alternative, and, and there was a lot of different discussions. And ultimately, the decision with this plan was made as this is, is probably best for the town, best for the applicant, and can probably get it done, we, we hoped or thought the quickest, given the delay that the applicants already suffered.
And before Frank thinks I'm too far along onto like his path of things, like, there are zoning requirements that I think have good purpose, right? So like, if this setback request were allowing too much to happen in front, so that it would be a danger on 125, I think I would feel really different about it. But they have a decent traffic flow, which also has to go through planning. They have a lot of space for parking around that could, you know, that the majority of the space is not in the, in question area. You know, it's like, there's no, there's no hardship for the community being brought by having this variance be given.
I, I think, you know.
Except for Alex, it's hardship for Alex, yes.
I think my perspective is, is that, you know, when you have these type of strange lots created by chance, or prior to inception of certain, certain, certain zoning realities, and at a later time, you know, there has to be, these lots have to be made economical to whoever buys them. They have to, you know, they have to be able to use the property in a way that's economical to them. Yet, the lot is, you know, by, according to today's zoning and the uses around it, you know, I think it's a challenge. So I guess my perspective is, you know, I hated when my senior partner used to say this, don't let the perfect be the enemy of the good. But in this case, you know, I, I, I think so many things about this are good and positive.
Can't everybody team up on me here? That's right, you wouldn't need me anyway.
Well, you know, I, I, I think, you know, you did raise another point there, which was even another consideration, was that, you know, in our review of it, I, I looked at it and thought, well, gee, this would be, best thing for this site is a rezoning. But to your point, that's, that is absolutely, becomes the enemy of, of good, because it's a long process. It, it, a site of this size doesn't, doesn't justify it economically.
You don't want to deal with town.
And, right, and.
Oh, but town meeting is fun.
When you're not the applicant, sure.
It is kind of crazy that, I mean, I guess I don't know what this site was in nineteen seventy-five when zoning was made, but it is kind of crazy that, like, a Chinese restaurant ended up in an industrial zone, like, that's not.
I don't think it was in, I don't know if it was industrial back then.
I mean, this is the thing, like, I don't know what it was.
How, how old is the big industrial-ish use behind there?
Yeah, I'm, I'm not certain, and I, I did take a kind of a quick look at the I-2 zone, and it is pretty interesting because. because this lot pops right out to to one twenty-five. And then when you get down towards Holt Road, there's some vacant land that I believe that that is still maybe I I two. But for the most part, there's, it didn't appear to me that any of the zone was fronting out to, right to one twenty-five, except really this particular lot.
So those two lots to the left, from the road, facing it from the road.
Right.
That, whatever that business is.
EJ Romitis, I believe.
Yeah.
Like, which.
And then the loft, those are zoned.
I think they're general business, and this is what we were saying before. I think those are general business, and I think the opposite side of the lot was rezoned to B two.
No further questions.
Anyone else?
Check with public company.
Brian brings the party.
Get to the galley.
I mean, do you want me to ask if there's public? All right, anybody else have any other questions?
I think that that's actually a fair comment, though, and the fact that we've all seen when when people in this town have a a problem with something that's being proposed, they're usually here, and they know what's going on. I mean, and no one's, no one's objecting to it.
Don't worry, that's, that's your benefit, too. Just because I don't like everything, what was the saying, don't let.
See, this is why we rushed through the first two, because we knew this would be a sticker.
Wait, hold on. Whoa, whoa, whoa. Anything else to throw at us? Do you want us to close?
Yes, please.
I'll second it. It's about time. You two guys have been running the whole meeting here.
You can give it to Steve. All right.
Do you want to read something?
I was gonna say Frank was a heavy word runner.
Frank would be glad to go watch the Celtics.
If I have to.
Oh, yeah, I would.
I would take your job, but I don't think I'm allowed to. I think Micah would have to. Anyone got anything?
Discussion?
Yes, discussion.
We need to vote to.
Didn't you guys just close?
Yeah, we just closed.
Didn't you make a motion and Steve seconded?
I made a motion, don't we have to vote on it?
Oh, I'm sorry, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
There we go.
All right, so, discussion.
I'm getting ready to get slaughtered.
Yeah. Yeah, but I don't think I stand alone. I drag bar that site with a fond remembrance that twenty years ago, my sixteen-year-old daughter was absolutely plastered there because they served.
I don't think you're supposed to say that.
And then.
It's closed, they can't do anything about it.
My son had a similar experience there. I think.
It's true.
Statute of limitations, right?
You can go, you can go through select board meetings, records, and you can see how many times that facility, that institution.
Beijing?
Beijing or Hokkaido had their legal rights revoked because they were serving minors. I'm just proud that my daughter was one of them.
I thought you were gonna say.
That being said, I think this is a marvelous thing to do.
We don't have enough Chinese restaurants in town, though.
Oh, yeah.
In that, we don't have any Jewish delis. Now, if you want to open a Jewish deli there, I'm all, I'm all in.
My in-laws just moved from New Jersey and would love some good bagels if we could figure that out.
If medical doesn't work out for your clients.
We can discuss it after, but I think this is a marvelous thing. To me, this is, anything you put there has this kind of purpose, is gonna be, anything is gonna be better than anything that was there. And nothing is significantly changing. I don't see any reason to, you know, have people like turn themselves into pretzels to make things fit when this already works. So I I think this is a great thing to do. I say Sally forth.
I'm just gonna second Ron, because I got nothing better to say than that.
On the Jewish deli as well.
Yes, absolutely.
I'm not convinced, you know, my kids are older, so I'm not convinced that daycare is better than a bar.
But what about a.
And you guys, and you guys never heard of me singing karaoke.
But what's your, you didn't have rhyme?
And you never will.
Also, do you want a bar with sixteen-year-olds getting drunk next to you? Probably not, probably not.
I lived in this town when I was sixteen, too, so.
I don't want to hear it. I don't want to know about your underage drinking.
I didn't say anything.
And my comment is, I feel good that we're doing the right thing for the aesthetics of the town of North Andover, so I think it'll be a nice addition.
Seconded.
No further comment.
Don't like double digits. I mean, I get stickler over ten feet and eleven feet. You want a lot more than that.
I think four out of five still gets them the vote, right?
Yes.
Yeah, he doesn't.
She's a louder protest.
He doesn't, he doesn't need me, I'm just, I'm gonna make him work for it a little bit. Can't let him come in and out, that'll be too easy.
It's fair.
Oh, and I think it's a fair thing to bring up.
Thank you. I'm not saying.
We should treat them all with, you know, some some review and question, but I, in this case, I think it's appropriate.
I would much rather we be getting something other than a brand-new, pretty building. I like more of a of a give when it's variance feet. But I do appreciate what that building has looked like for better part of a decade. And even though my child is going to be out of daycare, I think daycares are great, so.
Do we have a motion?
I'll second.
But I really wish they would have moved that back corner. Just want that known. Okay, you want a motion?
Frank has to make the motion.
Yes, Frank has to make the motion, so everybody get comfortable for a minute. Hold on, hold on, hold on. When you are doing it, do that plan.
Yeah, I have, uh, well, I have a question about the plans. On the title block, Mary Mac Engineering has an email address at AOL dot com.
Still, yeah, they still exist.
Oh, okay.
AOL does still exist.
Okay, yeah.
It, it, you're good. Do this plan.
And I don't see sheet numbers, I see got dates on those, but I'll just say Mary Mac Engineering. They're two different dates, so I'll give the dates of each plan, existing and proposed.
You don't need to worry about the existing.
No?
No, you don't have to worry about the existing. Worry about the proposed, which is April third, twenty twenty-four. Hold on, man, I want to make sure we get everything in. And then.
And then these two sheet, uh, uh, four sheets, and these are not dated. So I'll just say four sheets by Jarmel Kizel, how do I pronounce that?
Jarmel, I believe it's Kizel, Kizel?
How do I pronounce the architect's name, Jarmel Kizel? Oh, I'm whatever, yeah, close enough, yes, hey, yes, try to be, uh.
Yeah, there's no, Frank, can you just tell me if I'm missing a date?
On the architectural plans?
I don't see any date.
I don't. No, I don't, I do not see one.
I got plotted, I got a plotted date, two nine twenty-four. These are two nine twenty-four, which I think all we're getting for a date.
Where'd you say, where'd you say that, sorry?
Right here.
Oh.
It's very small.
Okay. I don't know if that's a good one to use, though, because if they print them out again to submit them to, that that might get a different plot date on there.
Brian, are you seeing a date that we're not finding?
No, because it it has the dates on the, where the date should go on the right-hand side.
Oh, not available, right?
The date should be here.
Right.
And it it's not there, so. But it does have the plot.
Some of the other ones we did tonight didn't have dates on the architecturals either.
I would just say plotted date.
See, but next, if they print these, if they print these out to turn them in for the building permit, or if they submit them electronically, it's not gonna get that.
Yeah, I don't know what else to do.
That's my problem.
Well, I mean, they'll have to be the same as the, they'll have to go back and look at the plans that were submitted and approved as part of this and make sure that they match.
All right, well, make notes, there are two pages that are SA one dot one.
Could we write a date in on it?
No, that's not how. You know what, just say, just do the page for the plan and say submitted with the application.
Do you want me to say each page sheet sheet number, or, oh, no, they're all SA one point one.
Well, the first two are SA one point one, and then there's SA one point two and SA one point three. I think that is everything you will need.
Okay, and then one other question?
Yep.
Do I read this? This, or do I send it?
Nope, this is one of the variances, so you want to, um, I make a motion.
That's different, that's, okay, I don't know how that was different than all of these.
This is the raising, this is the taking down of the existing structure and building a two-story and a three-story.
This is where he's looking for sixty-seven point eighty-seven.
This one is where he's looking for parking in the first fifty, and this one is where he's looking for the rear setback.
Okay, all right, all right, okay, I just wanted to show if that was, okay. All right.
All right, here we go.
I make a motion, we approve dimensional variances pursuant to Town of North Andover zoning bylaws, section one ninety-five dash ten point eight A for front and rear setbacks for the purpose of raising the existing structure and rebuilding a two-story, street-facing, and three-story, rear-facing facility for use as a daycare, medical offices, and associated improvements on the property. Sorry, do I obviously, if each one I say, make a motion?
Well, and also.
Okay, and also, okay. And also, approve a variance pursuant to Town of North Andover zoning bylaws, section one ninety-five dash seven point three yards setbacks, and section one ninety-five dash three, attachment three, table two, summary of dimensional requirements, footnote one. In all districts except Commercial Village, um, Village Commercial, and any corridor development district, front setbacks along Route one fourteen shall be a minimum of one hundred feet. Front setbacks shall be one hundred feet along Route one twenty-five in Industrial one and two districts. The first fifty feet of front setbacks under this requirement shall be made to provide an effective visual buffer, and no parking shall be permitted in the I two zoning dist, in the I two zoning district. Specifically, applicant has requested a front setback needing a relief variance of sixty-seven point eight seven feet. The front setback proposed is thirty-two point one three feet, and the front setback allowed per table two footnote one is one hundred feet. Also, a variance for, a variance pursuant to Town of North Andover zoning bylaws, section one ninety-five dash seven point three yards setback, and section one ninety-five dash three, attachment three, table two, summary of dimensional requirements, footnote one. In all districts except Village Commercial and any corridor development district, front setbacks along Route one fourteen shall be a minimum of one hundred feet. Front setbacks shall be one hundred feet along Route one twenty-five in Industrial one and two districts. The first fifty feet of front setbacks under this requirement shall be made to provide an effective visual buffer, and no parking shall be permitted in the I two zoning district. Specifically, applicant has requested a relief variance of the effective visual buffer per table two footnote one, and allowing for parking within the first fifty feet, fifty-foot buffer from Route one twenty-five of the front setback. Also, a variance pursuant to Town of North Andover zoning bylaws, section one ninety-five dash seven point three yards setbacks, and section one ninety-five dash three, attachment three, table two, summary of dimensional requirements for one rear set setback in the I two zoning district. Specifically, applicant has requested a rear setback needing a relief variance of five point nine two feet. The rear setback proposed is forty-four point zero eight feet, and the rear setback allowed per table two is fifty feet. And incorporating plans by Mary Mac, Mary Mac Engineering, consisting of one sheet proposed development dated April third, twenty twenty-four, and architectural plans by Jarmel Kizel, consisting of four sheets, SA one point one, SA one point one, SA one point two, and SA one point three, undated.
Hi, Ron? Your vote?
Aye.
Frank? Frank?
Okay, yes.
Steve?
Aye.
And I will give you an aye, even though you don't need it.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Attorney Vaughn, have a good night. All right, and I lost my agenda, so I think. Oh, is that what the next thing is?
Yeah.
Why, thank you.
Is that just the fact that people can't Zoom in anymore?
So, um, one board member can Zoom in if need be, and then I have to read my pretty little paragraph. So please, everybody, either don't come.
Or send tea for you.
Be sick. So that you're not showing up via Zoom, so I don't have to read that. And remote participation is no longer allowed, so people are no longer allowed to email in their questions or comments. They have to write a letter or do what the rest of us do and show up.
This, were they, okay, so, last meeting we had, they were, there were people participating, and you're saying they can no longer participate remotely?
Right.
So I understand that not Zoom.
They can, they can still watch on TV or online, but they can't email in questions, they can't email in comments.
They can't be a part of the base, they can only be a spectator.
Oh, okay, they can still email in prior to this meeting.
So if they email Jen by, I think Town Hall is open until, what, six on Tuesdays? So she, if they email by six.
Gotcha.
Then she can print it out and provide it to us during the meeting. But there's no more of the, hey, Jen, any comments, any emails come through?
Gotcha.
Everybody has to.
That's all COVID-related.
We are, we are done.
Is it just sunsetting of COVID time rules of some kind, or?
Yeah, so we had all gone remote.
Yeah, I was all remote the first two meetings, too, just because of the snow.
Oh. Listen, I was doing dishes when we were remote, it was great. That's fine, I think it was mentioned numerous times when I was God. But now, planning is no longer doing, um, the remote participation, I don't believe conservation is, it's just if if we needed a quorum, and, you know, you guys were on vacation, and this one leaves, and it's just a measly few of us, then somebody could participate. I think one member, one board member is allowed to participate via Zoom.
But not members of the public.
But not members of the public.
Gotcha.
So it's back to the good old days.
And this is all state-driven, not the Town of North Andover-driven?
Yes, yeah, so it was all part of COVID, but we are all out of that.
It's endemic now, not an epidemic, so.
There you go, so, oh.
I won't be at the next meeting, so I will not be coming, joining by Zoom.
Okay, well, it's it's Ron's last meeting.
Oh.
Oh, man.
Where's my last meeting?
She's right.
You might tell him more stories.
I'm gonna be away, I.
Drunk daughter.
Your kids are not going to like that if they ever do.
Oh, shoot.
Do they watch zoning board meetings?
Oh, they're riveted to it.
They want to watch that on.
Yeah, maybe if it gets auto-tuned on YouTube.
So it will be, well, I will say this. Next meeting will be Ron's last meeting officially. And then there are a few of us.
So you can make him do the reading then.
I actually think it defaults to Michael.
Oh.
Yep.
Yeah, right?
Yep.
And then there's actually.
Because one time Steve had to do it, I remember.
That might have been when Michael also wasn't here.
And then there's also a few of us who are up for reappointment. So if we don't get reappointed, it might be the last meeting for a few of us. So I am up for reappointment. You are not up for reappointment.
No, it was last year.
I believe you are up for reappointment, and I believe, Steve, you are up for reappointment.
Oh. As of, for the next meeting?
Well, our, our appointments expire June, I think, 30th.
Oh, after the next meeting.
But they typically.
So Steve and I are up for it?
And myself.
And you, right.
And Ron.
But Mike, the three of us all started at the same time. I thought we would have been on the same schedule.
No. Who's that?
Same month, actually.
Mike and I started at the same time. Same day.
So she had to refuse yourself?
Yeah, well, it was the same, same meeting, but you guys had signed, she was sworn in before I did.
You're right.
I don't think we get to vote on that.
Oh, it's fine. There's a few of us who are up. If you go on the zoning board, you can.
Okay.
You can see. I know myself, I am up for reappointment. Ron would be, but he is leaving us.
And reappointment is done by select.
So we get reappointed by the select board. The select board has a appointment committee.
Right.
Who they meet. Matthew got to meet with them before he got put on the board. They meet, but they have two meetings a month, I believe. I think one of their meetings is before our June meeting, and then one of them is after. So it's possible that we show up to the meeting and then we're just not here in July. So if some of us aren't here in July, you know why.
Jeez.
Do we, would they notify us or tell us?
Yeah, here we go.
Do we have to do anything?
That's a mystery.
So expiring at the end of June are Alexandria, Frank, Ron, and Steve.
I think that's right.
Wow.
Did you say I and Steve?
Yep. No, 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 not, no, no, not me.
Not him.
It's just you three, right?
Us three and Ron, but.
Yeah, I was last year, for whatever reason. I, I think they don't want too many people all at the same time.
That makes sense.
In either case, you might not see some of us in June. Well, you won't see any, any of us in June, and you might not see some of us in July.
Or I, or me.
It is, it is a mystery.
Okay. Because we have to get, do we have to, we have to get sworn in after we get reappointed?
Yes.
I believe.
Yes, you have to, you have to go to the town clerk.
I recall, yeah, yeah.
Yep.
Well, they, they accentuate a lot of that during our COVID times. We were just kind of arbitrarily.
Well, I remember going down, or maybe that was when I moved from the associate member to the.
Full member?
Member. Maybe that's when I had to go in and do it.
Don't worry, if you have to get re-sworn in, they'll tell you.
Okay.
And I think that is it.
Motion two jurors.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. All right.